And we'll, the first question is actually an opportunity of two-minute opening statement. So that each person can tell you why they're here. And then we'll have a one-minute closing statement for each person at the end.
Is that question number one?
That is question number one. So, I think also to save time, why don't we dispense with separate introductions and introduce yourself as you answer the first question, okay? I also point out, just to be sure, the two microphones that are hiding behind the favors here are for the video camera, we won't touch those. But Jim is waving one for that end of the table, and this end of the table, we'll use, we'll pass this one on, okay? So we'll do the best we can. All right, so if you want to be seated, candidates, we'll get started. All right, so the first question is simply, why are you a candidate? What issues are important to you? And I'm going to suspect that people in back can't see the name cards that were in front of you, so why don't you make sure you tell people what your name is when you answer. Oh, and the first person to speak is the first person to my right, Denise El Amin.
Hello, I am Denise El Amin. If you're sitting or standing here listening to me today, then I can rightfully assume that you want to know something about me. And more importantly, you want to know if I'm worthy of your vote, and if I'm the right person for the job as Solvay City Council member in the upcoming election. Again, my name is Denise El Amin. My husband and I have lived in Solvay since 2014. However, I have family who have taught Solvay their home for the past forty years. My family and I have visited and vacationed in Solvay for decades. Therefore, my connection and roots in this lovely city far surpasses my residency. My motivation for running for office is to improve the lives of all our citizens, particularly the lives of our seniors, who are often neglected and unable to take advantage of the programs designed to make their lives better. It is also interesting to note that the vast majority of our seniors are women. A society is judged in part in how it treats those who need help. It is my belief that we can do more, we must do more for our seniors and all those in need, and we are to claim we are a nation dedicated to the highest of moral principles. I will use my experience in training as a labor union negotiator and a liaison to establish and build positive and productive relationships with my fellow council members, the business community, and the people I represent. I love Solvay, and if elected, I promise to work hard to create an advocacy board for senior programs in Solvay. Thank you, I'm Denise El Amin, and I approve this message.
Okay, the next name polled is Ryan. Do you have that mic down there, Ryan?
All right. All right, so I'm Ryan Toussaint, and I'm currently on the Solvay City Council. I was born and raised here, and multiple generations of my family lived here. I found a way to go to school here, grow up here, start my own business here, buy a home in Solvay, make things work, and I want to live here the rest of my life. I built information technology divisions through scratch, and I'll use my management skills to help the council navigate for issues such as water, traffic, strategic partnerships, and updating ancient infrastructure. In my first term, I proved that I am viscerous responsible to the constituents of the city of Solvay. I was able to stop significant water rate increases by auditing the budget and eliminating unwanted expenses. I will continue to fight for the taxpayers of Solvay, law enforcement, city infrastructure, and good services for the residents of this city. Thank you.
Good evening, beautiful ladies and handsome gentlemen. I'm Kerry. You know me as Esco. I have a shop in Alton and Copeland. So I've been living and having business since 2015. Also, I'm a retailer. I'm also a founder and present founder of Solvay Retailers Association and Calabria Foundation, which aids in drought-related wildfires in California. And also, I'm a founder of California European Classic Cars Club. I have been in the retail businesses, a six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, one hundred, one hundred and fifty, one thousand, 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 one hundred and fifty, one thousand,
Even less. And I felt that I would have my historic knowledge of the city of Solvang, where I came from, and my institutional knowledge of how the city of Solvang has generated itself in the last number of years. From 2002, when the city of Solvang was based by the county manager as being dysfunctional, by the time I got off in 2016, we had an outstanding organization. We had good funding. We had stable employees. And I want to get back in and try to give a, I won't say a steady point of what's going on, but try to keep from having to reinvent the wheel. There are some things that need to be changed. And I'm going to quit and let somebody else talk now.
All right. Second question. We have just one question tonight that's unique to the mayor candidates. We thought we'd ask that right away. So Jim, Brian went first last night. Jim, why don't you go first this time? The question is, how does the mayor's role differ from that of other city council members? And which of those differences are most important to the city's residents?
The mayor is a member of the city council. He has as much power as does any other council member. And that's one vote. The mayor's responsibilities are chairing the council meetings, following the agenda, and representing the city in an official capacity. Those responsibilities are spelled out in city ordinances. The mayor would confer with the city manager in setting the council meeting agenda. The mayor and other council members may confer with the senior city staff but may not direct their activities. That is a function of the city manager. I believe that the council meeting should be run with a quiet decorum, with respect to those on the dais and to all those who appear before the council. It must be remembered that council meetings are business meetings and should be conducted as such. The mayor has many other duties, various board meetings throughout the county, SBCA, APCD, LAFCO, CalVANS, the city selection committee, and subcommittees of those boards. There are also requests for participating in various symphonies, speech requests, work cuttings, and other activities. And I honor as many of those as I can subject to my schedules. When you consider prep time and travel, official duties consume about 10 to 20 hours a week. As I am retired, I can dedicate as much time as needed to function as a 24/7 mayor. I hope, as you know, my contacts are public knowledge, my personal home phone number and email, as well as the local city contacts. The mayor also seeks consensus from the rest of the council. He would expect to call upon each council member's expertise and ambitions to see that the residents are happy and satisfied in living in this city. Council members are assigned to various ad hoc committees to encourage them to use their talents to the advantage of the team.
I didn't see the yellow card there. There wasn't one there? All right. Okay. All right, ready? The most important thing a mayor can do is lead the council to consensus and guide the council towards establishing the long-term goals of the city. A strong and energetic mayor can help cut taxes and improve city services. Future costly challenges for Solvang include a new sewer treatment plant, stormwater management, and reducing our unfunded liabilities. I kept the water rates down last year and will fight to prevent other tax increases. We need to restructure city policies from the ground up to make our permitting processes friendlier to both residences and businesses. This is important as our residents need to be encouraged to improve their homes and our businesses need to keep up with changes in tourism, demographics, and needs. Nonetheless, institutional memory is very important, and I'm happy to work with any of our incumbents in the event that they don't get reelected, just as I do now.
Operational change so that nobody has to worry about seeing the yellow card. We're going to ring a little bell when there's a yellow card. Those of you who are... That's right. Stick around until the guitars and the drums. All right. Anyway, the next question is back to asking everyone. Is Solvang a business-friendly community? And why or why not? And should anything be done to make it more business-friendly? And the first person out of the hat, I can't be right because you were first the last
I think that Solvang is...
What color is white?
Okay, here we go. I'm new at this. I think Solvang is a very business-friendly community for ice cream shops, trainee shops, things like that. I think we've got a long way to go with bringing more business into Solvang. Midweek business, I think this has been talked about a lot, about the conference center. It's one of the things that I stress the most. Kind of what we're all talking about, you've already read if you've read The Star, that the focus with the money that we spend on the SEBV, I really believe it needs to go towards, and they're veteranist than I am, they've been doing this longer, I understand that, but there's got to be a way to create more midweek tourist, midweek business conferences in the city. There's enough conference, there's enough, there's enough business between Los Angeles and Silicon Valley to bring more money to tourists and money business to this Valley midweek. I know we don't have a conference center yet, but it's something that's got to be a priority. In the last general plan, there was a $500 expense, I know it's not carrying more, but in the 10-year plan, it was a $500 expense for a park in Suny Fields. Why in the world do we not need that money for something that is going to keep businesses here, bring more businesses here? It just doesn't make sense. So I think the main focus of being business-friendly and tourist-friendly is to create a higher level of tourist, if you will, and a higher business-type person that's going to be here. We spend our money, send their money in our hotels, spend, yeah, I got the yellow one. Right there. Spend their money in our hotels, spend the money in restaurants, spend the night in our town. I have no problem at all with the money that the chamber gets, I have no problem at all with the visitors get. I just think that we can work a lot harder, and that's really what I want to make my focus, is midweek conferences and businesses and get some more business in the city. Maybe if you're a vest, it wouldn't be such a bad thing because I've talked to a lot of people, I've walked a lot of neighborhoods and traffic, and tourists is one of the biggest things.
Next is Karen.
Okay, so I think that we are answering the simple question, is Solvang a business-friendly city? Simple answer, yes. Solvang is a business-friendly city. We are about business, we are about tourism, tourism drives our city. My comment on this, I'm going to make this very short because it's a straightforward question. I feel that our city administration could make it easier on our businesses for applying for permits and getting their businesses started. Now, this is something that doesn't just start at the council level, it starts at the administrative level. It would take a lot of cooperation, working with our planning commission and our various tourist agencies within the city. So my answer is yes. Solvang is definitely a city-friendly industry. That's what we're based upon, we're based upon that, we're based upon helping businesses.
Next is Denise.
Hi, I'm Denise Ellemin. I know you have short-term memory, so I have to keep saying this so you'll remember it. If you knew me way back 30 years like the other people here, then you already know them, so I'm going to have to keep saying that. Denise Ellemin, okay? The question about business-friendly Solvang being, I am not a business owner, but I am running against at least six out of the 10 are business owners. So I can't say that I'm right, but when you see a lot of business owners running, then there must be some problems with businesses that they feel that they need to take care of, and that will be their priority to get business going for them or whomever. But I will say, however, that on occasion, I frequent restaurants and I have heard some of my friends grumbling about how they have to go through a lot of different things in Solvang, and they wish that it was more streamlined. So it's all in business-friendly. I'm going to let the experts and the multimillion business members take that answer, and I'm going to wait until you ask me about buying stuff in Solvang, and I think I'll be there. Thank you, I'm Denise Ellemin.
And next is Jim.
Is Solvang a business-friendly community? Well, that's an astounding yes. We thrive on the tourist and visit Solvang. We want and need the businesses to be profitable and successful. I believe that we're a mecca for new businesses, however, it must be under our terms. We don't need businesses that want to change the characters of our city. It's the characters, it's the character that brings the visitors, and the visitors purchase goods and memories that give us a wonderful lifestyle. To operate a business in Solvang is a process to follow. It's spelled out in a pamphlet provided by the planning and building department. Some businesses sail through the process with no problem, and others don't. I believe that's because of the experience in dealing with such a complicated process. Besides city and county regulations, there are state codes that must be followed, and those are completed by outside resources. It's a thorough procedure, but our staff handles it helpfully and with courtesy, and sometimes beyond the call of duty. We have a wonderful town, and we, like I mentioned, we are a mecca for business. We have a million, over a million tourists a year come to our town, and a lot of businesses need those kind of, that volume of people. But yet, they want to bring their style of business into our Danish community. That doesn't always work.
And next will be Kenny.
Is Solvang a business-friendly community? First of all, the question should be, is city of Solvang business-friendly? They want to separate the city and their community. For the city, my answer is, as a local business owner, big no. Big no. I'm about the summer business. I don't see some changes in the near future and get out. And I'm going to build up my own Solvang near my neighborhood. Also, I live in Solvang, I'm a resident. As a resident, I have no reason to like the tourists, except noise, traffic, jam, stealing, and the high cost of living. However, it can be combined, it can be win-win. I'll share some of my own experiences. You know, a few days, I have a shop on Copperhead Drive, and there's a big construction right now going on which destroyed our business. No one informed us, no one told us, no one asked us what is going to be on. We were told the construction is going to be all the way until end of January. You know, the worst holiday of the year is the most busy time of the year for us and also for the city, for everyone else. That construction, they asked us, why do we have to do it after Christmas? By now, what is the emergency? We were not informed. We're here just here suddenly, coincidentally. You know, since I started the business in Solvang, I regret very much. I've been punished, humiliated, insulted many, many times because I wanted to fly the American flags and British flags on my store. Do you know, you cannot put more than two flags on your store. I appealed, we formed an association, we appealed to the city council to change the code, but still, nothing has changed since last three years. Thank you very much.
The question is, is Solvang business-friendly? We have a number of businesses in Solvang that are large enough to approach, but is the city itself business-friendly? And I'm going to have to say marginally. What I may complain that I have from businesses is that the permitting process gets very confusing, and the biggest complaint I have is an uneven, anyway, uneven, boy, my mind just went. They are not giving equal representation to businesses. One person will come in with a problem, and they will, city staff will take care of it immediately. Other people will go in and they will have the same question, and it takes them six months to get this thing finished and repaired. The planning department know they are trying to do their best, but I believe the planning department needs to go in and have a review of the way they handle this process of permitting. There's a very unequal response to the people coming in. You really don't know what you're going to get. I've had people come in and say that they set some plans to go in, and they send them off to a plant check, and then they came back, oh, we couldn't see the plants in because it wasn't done by an engineer. So we need to have the city come in and take a look at the way we actually deal with people who want to bring new businesses into Solvang. Once the businesses are here, we're very friendly, but to establishing new businesses, we are very lackadaisical or slapdash in how we do it. You really don't know what's going to happen to you when you go in, and sometimes you goes right through, other times you have six weeks or six months to go through.
Testing, okay, we're good. The perception for some will say that we are friendly, and then the biggest perception that we come from contractors and business owners and architects and individual constituents, all within the city, they think that it's not so friendly and embracing when we come to the city and we want to talk, go across the counter and just simply get a sign taken care of, or a window pulled out and a door closed. When we come into Solvang, it says we're here to take care of our community, we serve our community. And I think coming from Safeway and Bonds and the basic simple thing is always is that you've got to make sure that you take care of your customers, and we're the customers to the city, all of you. We all need to come and see, if we have an issue, we should be helpful. We shouldn't have to have a piece of paper that crosses that counter, and then it goes up to Cal Codes, and it comes back when everything is addressed and taken care of right there on the spot. It needs to be simple, it needs to be consistent, and it needs to be fair, and we all need to know how it is. And if we can do that, we're going to get more people wanting to come in, come to the city, put a business in, and all of a sudden, we're full, we're looking beautiful. As we look out there today, we are a full city. We have a lot of stores. There's very few, there's very few empty stores, unlike down in Santa Barbara, Lower State. That's ugly down there. We don't want to ever go there.
I love this question. I'm scared for this all day. I actually work for a business in town, and unfortunately, this is a huge problem, not just for the business I work for, but all of the businesses. So I'm going to hardly disagree with the mayor and agree with parts of what it's, it's another colleague here, Espa. Unfortunately... Thank you. Unfortunately, we are not a business-friendly community, not just for those who want to come here, but those who are already here. So I'll give you four examples that are concrete that we can all relate to. One, there's a fellow bud, you'll figure it out. He wants to open a vigilante shop. The poor fellow's worked six months to try and get that shop open, trying to go through the permitting process and things of that nature. There's a one that has moved from Los Alamos to Buell Flat Rock, Solvang. We love their business. They've tried for 12 months, 12 months to try and get over, and they're still not.
While paying the rent.
While paying the rent, thank you, Espa. The company I'm working for now has been trying for six years, six years, to open up this addition to their patio so they can improve in business and to their sales. And then there's a real estate developer who has been waiting for 10 years trying to get his real estate plan approved by the city. Now, I think you had made a great point. Some businesses sail right through the process, others, they have to wait 10 years. This is unacceptable, and we've got to stop it. We can't do this. But it takes this community to want to change this. And I'm just, sorry. But we can do better than this, we must do better than this, and it's time for change.
All right. There are many things great going for Solvang, but no, the city of Solvang is not business-friendly. There are major issues with our planning, plan check, and permit processes. We need to restructure and create a smoother process for the residents and business owners to build, remodel, and/or make ten improvements. Possibly partner with Buell for plan check, or hire a part-time consultant to work with staff a few days a week for a more consistent process. We consider monthly project status meetings to involve engineering, planning, fire, plan check, et cetera, to close the loop with projects. We need to consider alternatives for a more efficient, more consistent, and user-friendly way providing planning services. We need to make this process friendlier for the residents and businesses of Solvang. We also need to consider a form of amnesty program to establish a limited time opportunity for users that operate without permit or permit, that may seek them today with customer service-oriented staff willing to help guide through the process. This will increase property values, safety, and decrease liabilities that new homeowners face with buying a home with unpermitted work. We should also explore services such as Viewpoint, which moves things into the planning and building information into the cloud, provides a more consistent, transparent, and proactive service, allowing project data to be immediately available to all parties in the cloud for efficient and instantaneous response rather than waiting weeks or months for an answer. Do you want to put more money into overhead or the quality of your project?
Just really quickly, what I wanted to touch on is, perhaps I misunderstood this question, but I thought that the question said, is Solvang a business-friendly community? And the answers that I've been hearing are that Solvang is not a business-friendly city. So as far as community goes, absolutely. Now, that is a completely different question than people addressing how the city has dealt with this.
Okay, I'm going to approach this with a completely different perspective than the other people sitting up here. I am a land use consultant. Being a land use consultant, believe me, I understand the concerns and the frustrations of people that try to cancel permits anywhere. I often go through these same frustrations with my clients. That being said, we have a general plan, a zoning code, a very unique to Solvang, and a state California building code with additions, requirements from the county that must be followed from the health department, from the fire department, you name it, it goes on and on. These documents are there for the protection of the city. It also means individuals will be treated the same, not with special favors. We have such requirements for our safety so all applicants are treated equally, fairly the same as others. They are asking, if you're asking for a change of use of your store, say from a gift shop to a food or drinking establishment, it is going to be difficult, but not impossible. You must follow protocol, follow the rules, follow the codes, and come in with a complete application. If you do not understand the application process, find a professional to help you, an architect, a designer, a drafter, a contractor, a land use consultant. It is the cost of doing business, and yes, the requirements can be expensive. Part of the charm of Solvang is the continuity of the architecture, the regulated signs, the clean streets, the first-class stores, restaurants, bakeries, and pastry rooms. Our codes and requirements are some of the reasons why the tourists feel uncomfortable
Thank you. Next question.
Future annexations to Solvang have been a topic recently. Should Solvang expand its borders? If not, why not? If so, by how much? And how should that growth be accomplished? That's a lot for two minutes, but two questions. Robert goes first. It's on.
I am the chairman of the planning commission in city of Solvang. I remember the last several years, I've been on the planning commission since 2012. I was the chairman of the commission the first time that was brought in front of us. And it seemed as if, and again, if you read the article, I don't need to be redundant here, if you read the newspaper articles we're all talking about, there were no homeowners at that meeting, so I thought it was really weird. And I don't know if that was kind of like a stealth annexation or who was pushing this through, but I don't think the city wants it. I think if it ever came down to it, we need to do a study in conjunction with the urban boundary group, or the urban boundary initiative, to really, to look into it. But it's ultimately the citizens' responsibility and the citizens' desire if they wanted to annex. The only thing I would ever consider annexation on would be where Buell Flat Rock is right now. North of 246, forget about it. Alamo Patato, forget about it. Green space has got to stay green space. I would never want to see any houses put on any of those farmlands. I'd be worried about other jurisdictions getting their hands on it. But there's no reason we need to put any properties or any businesses on those properties except where Buell Flat Rock is, because it's currently an industrial plant. As you talk about diversity, which is maybe one of our other topics, bringing a high-tech business complex to that facility that's already an ISOR, it's zoned for that, that's the only thing that I could possibly, the city would ever want to do anything with annexation. The rest of it, leave it alone.
I don't know if we should expand the city limits. We had a study, it didn't give me the answer. I wanted a yes or a no. Are we, is there an advantage to expanding? Yes. For example, how can we bring to town another industrial base without more land? But if we expand, the state will get involved with determining our housing stock and other infrastructure requirements. We live in a city surrounded by rural farmland, it's beautiful, but how do we keep it that way if we can't control how the land is being developed? How long can we protect our rural community with population increases that we can see? long can we protect our rural community with population increases that we can see in the future? Are we going to let the county make that decision for us? I invited S.O.L. Save Our Solvang to make a presentation of urban growth boundary before the council. I see that as a future agenda item for the council to decide whether or not to go forward with ordinance. It appears that the urban growth boundaries have been successful in other cities. So that's something to consider. I'm willing to consider that, and I think we should bring that to the council for discussion. Thank you.
And next is Denise.
Hello, everyone. I'm Denise Salamita. I think that diversification and annexation could be part of an overall strategy that would enable Solvang to successfully embrace change and increase the likelihood that we could grow responsibly. Furthermore, I know that annexation is a touchy subject. I get a lot of people knocking on my door. However, it's our responsibility as council members to map out a path that is acceptable to the citizens of Solvang. I'm sure that this will spark a lively debate, and I love those, to those on both sides of this issue. But I'm confident that we can come to terms on how we can collectively address these issues. Therefore, I think that it's imperative that we come up with a plan on how to proceed and let the voters of Solvang have the final say. I read the article also, and it seems like we do studies, we do a lot of studies here in Solvang. Every time we get a new set of city council members, we do studies. The studies are not free. We study everything, but we don't take tests. I haven't seen one take a test. So what happens is they do the studies, and then they pick and choose what they wanted to come. It looks like they pick a study, a person to do a study, to find what they want to come out of the study. So they pick and choose what they want, and we pay $50,000 for a study. So I am sick of studies. I want something to be done and take a test, okay? Let's pass this test before we take another step. I'm Denise. Thank you.
Next, Bill Karen.
Okay, on the point of annexation, it absolutely must be a valid initiative. It must be something that the citizens of Solvang will have a say in. First of all, you all, do you know we have a general plan? There's a general plan. And before we can even consider something like this, we have to examine what our general plan is. Going back towards having, to listen to comments regarding experience of council members, what I do have to say is that what I have learned in the few, a year and a half that I've been on this council, perhaps less as an appointed incumbent, I have seen our experienced council members overlook updating many important things that I feel need to be updated. One of those is our general plan. So valid initiative, review general plan. Let's look at infill instead of expansion. If we are going to even consider annexation, we want to look at areas of our sphere of influence. Thank you.
Brian, you're up.
My biggest concern with the recent annexation attempt was it seemed to be the cart before the horse. The study was lacking direction with no clear vision plan. I feel this creates fear of a hidden agenda that doesn't benefit the residents of the valley. The council needs to develop a strategic plan to fiscally pay for upcoming costs before taking on annexation. We can't allow our structural costs to keep increasing and bring the burden on the residents. There is no doubt there could be positive benefits in annexation by keeping local control, preventing improper zoning by the county and/or the state. And we certainly wouldn't want to end up with a development that benefits the county while the city is left to try to mitigate the damages to the residents and businesses. I'm open to analyzing our options in greater detail, but we need a vision plan with community engagement. This gives a community of Solvang ownership over its future. We also need to show benefit to our residents and accountability. I would support urban growth boundaries to do this. Thank you.
Okay, you're next.
I wonder if there is any watch people here tonight. I guess there are none here. Anyway, my answer for annexation, big no for residential purpose, but big yes for commercial purpose. We need to increase the city revenues so it can bring the city's residence cost of living lower, lower taxes, subsidize the water, even free water for local residents. City needs to build up environment friendly, 100% bring a conference center, a commercial center hosting the high-tech industry, having the smokeless industry supporting our dining and wine industry. And also, that will help to, the traffic jam, especially around downtown. So my answer is again, for residential purpose, no, for commercial purpose, yes. Especially the blue flat can be used for that purpose, to build up the big parking lot so the tourists they cannot, they don't have to drive all the way inside the city. They can park outside of town, but many towns they do that, and then we must have to go to town and also create the facilities to support local existing businesses. Thank you.
Tough act to follow. Thank you, Esco. Actually, everybody's made some terrific comments, and I want to thank you all for that, especially Denise. She does, she does politics with a lot of humor. I truly appreciate it. Having said that, annexation is a tough issue because it really requires the entire community to be involved and engaged. And that's where leadership is really, really important. Unfortunately, I think the city council, as much as I love everyone on the city council, we may have, I'm going to use this word, they drop the ball, in the sense that it takes time to help the community understand what their options are in terms of the sphere of influence and to develop a long-term plan for that space between here and Beulah. I think that's where a lot of the questions and issues arose. I can't top, considering other people have already said you've said much better than I did, but I, the point I wanted to make, how do we do this? How do we do this? The main way we do this is to work together as a community to try and find the best solutions that we can for this time. They may not be the best solutions going forward, but at least they'll work for us today. And then move together as a community to find a way forward. Now, urban boundaries initiative is a wonderful tool to accomplish that because it requires the city council to work with the community to put these issues on the forefront. So again, I think that's the way forward. Thank you.
Recently, we had a presentation by a citizens group about urban growth boundaries, the way to control and develop the urban initiative. I do want going to love that review GD's turn of opinion as to whether or not might go ahead of Solvang. That being said, the annexation proposal of last spring was not what I thought it would be. I thought it was going to be something completely different. It needed more vetting, including input of all the citizens of Solvang who might be interested. Possibly in the future, we can discuss urban growth boundaries and possibly annexations to see which best fits the needs of Solvang. There is an existing area of the sphere of influence that Robert was talking about on the west boundary of Solvang. This area is zoned by the county for light industrial uses. Possibly, we need to investigate this area with citizens committees to see if this area might be annexed for taxing purposes. This area is already served by city water. There's been a comment made that none of the owners of the property considered in the SLI annexation of the spring of 2018 were interested. I disagree. On the west side, two of the three owners were interested, and I believe on the north side of town, I believe all the parties may have been interested. They may not have come to meetings, but upon occasions, they did send their representatives to listen. This is definitely a subject for further discussion sometime in the future, including council, staff, owners of the property, don't forget them, and of course, citizens of the city. Thank you.
Hey, I have to write this time. I am not a fan of current, the current idea of an annexation to the city of Solvang. The biggest, one of the biggest reasons is that any annexation that would take place of county property, the county keeps most of the property taxed. So what would happen, any development would be done, the developers would put in the infrastructure and pay for that. But after it's developed, the city of Solvang is responsible for maintaining the infrastructure. But we don't get the majority of the property tax out of it. The last annexation of the county of Santa Barbara was over Longboat, and the county kept, I believe, 60 to 70% of the property tax that was generated. So any annexation right now with the county, it becomes a money-losing situation for the city of Solvang. The second item is people have been talking about the urban growth initiative. An urban, I didn't check on urban growth initiative. Urban growth initiatives work very nice if there is open space around the community that has not been developed and is within the city limits, where the urban growth initiative can say, okay, we'd like to maintain this property as it is. City of Solvang, we have very little open space. We are, as Karen mentioned, she wants to do our infill, and that's what we need to do. Someday, we may need to do a annexation. And on that one, there's a long process to go through for annexation. We have to change our general plan. We have to go before LAFCO. It is a major project, but it's something that is, when it comes up, it is done by the city, and it is done with input from the citizens, either as vote of the initiative or having a very low roll at city council to put in their input. I thank you.
Testing. Well, I'm going to be redundant, but I'm just going to say, I'm not in favor of it. And I think, again, party should be going to reexamine the city plan. And if we're going to go forward, we have to understand that the county, Santa Barbara, retains a large percentage of the property tax on the lands surrounding the city. We're going to have to have greater dialogue with them. And I think it starts with dialogue because we want to know what they're going to do. County can come in and start planting. If someone wants to come in and plant cannabis right next door to us, we have to know that ahead of time. And if we just let the county do what they want to do without having any form of dialogue, that could happen. It can happen sooner than later, as you know, with the state has said that it's legalized. So I just think that we need to have clear dialogue with the county, sit down with them, and have a seat at the table so that we can address those issues with them. And going back to the annexation, if we go back, we haven't even decided yet about traffic and having issues there. So if we're just sitting there putting light industry down below, if we have housing going in, we're already having traffic issues right now. So we need to reexamine what we've done in the general plan before we go through and do any annexation. Thank you. Just a little update. It's just about eight o'clock. We've had one hour of the 90-minute forum. We've asked three questions to the whole panel plus an additional one to the mayors. So we have plenty more questions. We're not going to get through them all. We'll do what we can, and we'll leave a minute, 10 minutes for a one-minute closing statement by anybody who chooses to do it. But at the risk of doing a commercial, Robert and Speaker have referred to the article in the Star. So what you're looking for on the newsstand is this one. Inside.
Inside. My picture.
Inside is Robert's picture. Inside the paper is this section that has information on Solvang, Beulah City Councils, and the high school board. So, okay, so that's what we're talking about today. Next question is, should Solvang diversify its economy to make it less dependent on tourism? If so, how? And if not, what's the city council's role in supporting the tourism economy? And first is John.
I do not think. I do not think Solvang should ever be less dependent on tourism for its funding stream. I think we need to supplement it somehow. We have discussed a possible small convention center encouraging small businesses, professional organizations to come in during midweek for their conventions and professional meetings. This is a worthwhile endeavor we need to continue to explore. Another idea is to encourage the light industrial business in popular disowned areas. I would like to have this S.D.B. in the chamber work on maximizing Solvang's midweek tourist industry.
Should we diversify? That's really a two-part question being asked. Yes, we should diversify, but the question is how? Do we bring in a different retail mix, possibly at the cost of our Danish image, or do we bring in new industry? New industry means expanding the city boundaries as we're almost a built-out city. The Economic Development Committee has been wrestling with this question for several years. We've made some adjustments for tourism, but haven't been able to come up with a solution. Most ideas require more land. Whether or not we add to our reserve revenue base, we as a council must support tourism fully and completely. We must encourage tourism and ensure our rainy day funds are as full as possible. Because tourism is cyclical. There will be a day where the business will slump, and we should be ready to provide city services with reduced revenue. So the upshot is, we're a built-out city. What are we going to do? We wrestle with this question for several years. Convention bureau, we haven't gotten space in the city for a convention bureau of any size for a reasonable amount of tourist midweek. So we're stuck, we're stuck still trying to resolve the issue. And those are the two questions. Should we have a change in retail mix, which may impact our Danish community, or should we dump the bidglo for more land? Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Denise Salamita. Glad to meet you. Should Solvang diversify its economy? And I feel yes. Economic diversity is essential for survival because change is inevitable. Solvang's business model has been very successful and has established reputation as a safe, family-friendly vacation destination where you can just walk across the street in front of a car, and no one will hit you, and you won't get a ticket. So that's part of Solvang. However, our past successes cannot protect us from future irrelevances. Throughout the United States, shopping centers and retail giants are closing their doors. My granddaughter is forever missing Toys R Us. Because they have fallen Because they have fallen victim to the invisible hand of innovation, generational change, and the general unwillingness to adapt to changing consumer behaviors. If Solvang intends to remain relevant, we must embrace the inevitability and reality of change with a proactive plan that will incorporate and anticipate the needs of both our traditional and potential new customer base. Through consensus and earnest planning by the city council and its constituents, we can control our destiny and protect Solvang's unique cultural heritage. Together, together we can do this.
First of all, we need to improve our existing tourist economy. There are several serious problems. Existing retail industries, including the sales are about twenty to thirty-five percent less compared to last year. Even we had huge fires last year, thanks to that, there was a new fire, but sales are twenty to thirty-five percent less. Hotels and restaurants are occupied mostly only by weekends. We need to rebrand and reshape Solvang brand. We need to bring better spending consumers rather than walking and just walking around and nor one-on-one highway restaurant booking visitors. Cities should concentrate on industrial conversions to increase weekends business and lead in language. In South, but not through the third parties, future tourism business development plans should be not financed, again, otherwise should not do finance at the cost of residents, but from the tourist pockets. No free parking for tourists, no free rest for tourists. Financial sources to be used directly for residents, and city council should not be influenced by lobbying interest parties, looking at financial support from the city, which is residents' home. The city council can adopt policies to combine our existing tourism with industrial conversion business and making new future plans for the growth of wine, brewery, bakery, adding to these industries. We need to reshape and rebrand Solvang. City council can adopt these policies and make the future plans. Thank you. And also, we should concentrate on limiting Solvang over-producing solvent products, such as wine and beer. Thank you.
I want to keep it simple. Tourism is our lead industry, always has, and always will be, period. We are in the state of California, we have Highway One, we have Southern California, we have Laguna Beach, we have San Diego. People want to come here, they will always want to come here. We need to be there for them. What we've done here in this community, though, is we've embraced all the surrounding communities, we've become a vineyard, we've had San Luis, Valley, the U.S. D involved. Everybody's talking, we're working as a group, we will have people come to us no matter what. We need to get better at what we do, everyone else is. And I should see that if we want this community to grow, why go and reinvent the wheel? We have it, everyone else wishes to. Some of you in this room have come in here, and you're now residents of this community because you like it the way it is. We want to continue with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Right, so this is a really big deal to me, so this is probably the only thing that I'm going to read. And I'm going to read the question because I would like to stay on point of the questions that are actually being asked. So should Solvang diversify its economy to make it less dependent on tourism? If so, how? If not, what is the city council's role in supporting the tourism and economy? Our local businesses in this culturally Danish city drive and attract the tourism that generates the revenues to help support the day-to-day operations of this city. So, should we diversify the economy to make it less dependent on tourism? Heck no. The question should simply be, should Solvang diversify its resources or sources of revenues? I feel that we already have diversity in our businesses and an increase in diversity in residential demographic, which is forever-changing. However, we must remember we are a tourist town because of our Danish theme. Without tourism, our business would likely fail.
Still working, by the way. Should Solvang diversify away from tourism? I'm going to agree with Karen and Kim. It's the city of Solvang's lifeblood is tourism. Tourism is what brought Solvang to what it is today. If we didn't have tourism in the Danish community, Solvang would look most likely like San Naves, Los Alibas, Sisquik. We are a small town away from major traffic gardens. We have developed over the years primarily a tourist-related community, which people from LA want to come up and visit. Over the years, the demographics have changed. In the early, late fifties, early sixties, we had the greatest generation of Americans coming into Solvang. Now, in the seventies, we had their children. Today, we have the new immigrants coming. Years ago, you would not have seen Hispanics, Asians, African-Americans. Today, we see those demographics on a great regular basis. But should we change our, to something else? No, but there are businesses we can bring in and we need to take a look at. Also, Solvang has diversified. Solvang is the medical center of the valley. We are the financial center of the valley, and we have the banks, we have the lawyers, we have the investment stock and securities. So we are diversifying in the city of Solvang, but there are other items we can bring in to help us be more diversified and maintain a good quality of life that we've all come to expect in the San Luis Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, should Solvang diversify? The answer is yes. I think a lot of this diversity will come to us whether we want it or not. There's a lot of millennials, a lot of younger people, there's a lot of e-commerce, small footprint e-commerce, it's going to probably come to us because we are such a desirable community. I also think that having the Forest Service here is a step in the right direction. It's a business that's coming, moving to Solvang that doesn't have, that isn't dependent upon, you know, or the employees are not, they're not, we're not having lower-wage employees working in them. I think it's really a great step in the right direction to get businesses like that. That's why I think that it would be neat to have a high-tech park here somewhere. So that's the question about that. I don't like reading Greek speeches, but I'm going to read just one thing, is some notes from some businesspeople that I really respect, who own businesses in Solvang, some live here and some don't, and a few of the points that they gave to me were, Solvang should aim to lift itself into a slight or better market segment of the tourist visitor market without losing its dedication to its Danish uniqueness. Solvang's businesses must focus on better quality of retail lodging and food and beverage. The restaurant scene lacks great restaurants and is under no circumstance representing the hip Nordic food scene. I didn't know there was a hip Nordic food scene, but there is. And we are, we're lacking quality products like Copenhagen House, et cetera, for the hipper urban shoppers from Los Angeles and the Bay Area. Attract Danish businesses, Solvang should attract authentic Danish businesses and investors to preserve the Danish uniqueness and experience. These are just a few of the words of the, of the things that have been told to me by investors, by businesspeople that want to come here and want to open businesses, saw we're hoping to get more like that. I think once we get more high tourist business, we're going to get more money, we're going to get fewer tourists with more dollars as opposed to the other way around, and that's how we, we keep going. Thank you.
Yes, we do need to adapt to the change in retail intended mix, as well as customer social habits. People are buying differently today. In terms of supporting the economy, we need to provide a strong infrastructure for small businesses which provide jobs. We need to make sure we don't have outdated and unnecessary regulations that stop small businesses from being able to thrive and invest more in infrastructure and customer service. I'm ready to work hard in re-mapping our planning department and permitting process to create a more transparent, efficient, and customer-service-oriented approach. This will benefit both resident remodels and local business ventures. We need to focus on creating a strong local economy to offset significant city expenses instead of taxing our residents. Tourism is changing today, and we need to focus on experiences that will keep Solvang thriving. Any diversification outside of this needs to complement our existing local businesses.
Thank you. I think there's a conspiracy. I love this question, I really do. As a business economist and financier, I think on the one hand, we have to look at our city's budget revenues, which are heavily dependent on tourism, something around seventy percent, sorry about that, seventy percent of our, our revenues come from TOT and sales taxes combined, so we unfortunately are very heavily dependent on tourism, and I love tourism. I think in some ways, we are in the infancy of tourism for Solvang. I know I've talked to a number of people in, in the audience as well as the community, and they have so many wonderful ideas to really reinvigorate Solvang and bring new tourist dollars to the community. Having said that, can we diversify? Absolutely. Again, it's getting me some good comments, I think Ryan also made some great comments. One of the things I'd like to add to that is, we're moving, whether we like it or not, into the Amazon age. I think everybody is aware of what Amazon's doing, changing the whole nature of retailing, bringing e-commerce to our doorstep. Whether we're ready for it or not, we have to figure out how we're going to deal with that, because otherwise, Solvang could die, or fade, so to speak. I've talked to some of the business owners, and they're already facing these challenges. They're trying to figure out, how do we stay competitive? How do we provide a compelling experience for people to come here and want to continue to come here? Whether it's buying a product or enjoying an experience with the wine and the beer industry and the food industry. Yes, we do have some really great Nordic food, by the way. Having said, I will, I will make one comment, because this is relevant. If you look at this little company called WhatsApp, they had sixty employees, and they sold the company to Facebook for nineteen billion dollars. I would love to have that kind of a business in Solvang, with a small footprint, clean industry that can contribute to our economy, but also think globally as well. So is that the future for Solvang? I hope so.
All right, we have reached eight to twenty, so we're going to have to do closing statements, and I think to save time, we, rather than be drawing cards, we'll just go down the road so you can save time passing the microphone. So we'll start with this woman who hasn't told us her name yet.
This is the last time you're going to hear this until I come knocking at your door. My name is Denise Elamene, and I'm glad to meet you guys, and I just want to thank each and every one of you for welcoming my husband and I into this wonderful community of Solvang. I love this place, I really do, and I promise you, if you give me your vote, I am more than capable to work with any one of these businessmen who win. I am welcoming the challenge. Give me a vote, and I'll show you what I can do. Thank you, guys, I really appreciate your love. Thank you.
I want for future democratic, transparent, equal trading, and budget control, create a government run by new faces and fresh blood. New faces and fresh blood. I want a flag, a business, and residence, and pet-friendly government, and I want free or at least subsidized women for local residents. This city has, this town has tremendous potential, tremendous potential, which is not used at all. So after listening to all the candidates, I'm another politician, I'm invested, I'm a local businessman, I'm trying to keep my business up. But we are trying to do the organizers, and Chandler Commerce, and the rich paper star, organizing this, we think I had a great opportunity to listen to other candidates after this. I'd like to make an announcement, because I found out that there are better candidates than me, and I believe there are people here who can do the job better than me, and I'm going to announce that I'm resigning and stepping back from my candidacy. I will support Chris, and I will support Robert. I think they are one of the great future candidates, city council members, to bring this city better for business and for residents. Thank you, I believe you.
I told you it's a tough act to follow. I really appreciate the, the effort that the Chamber of Commerce made, that we watched people to put this together, and we really thank all of you for coming. This is really important to our community. We all have to do the civic duty and stay engaged, and it's up to the council to remind the leadership to bring you all together, to find the common solutions that we need to change for the better and work together. Having said that, I'm not resigning. Testing, one, two, three.
My name is Kim Jensen. And I just want to say thank you for everybody coming. I guess this is the, the largest group we've ever had for a city council forum, so I really appreciate having all of you here, and thank you all for coming.
Do you mean, do you mean candidates or people in the audience?
Well, of those who are participating by watching, and those participating potentially to be on the council, there's some great candidates here, and I respect every one of them, and you will have that chance to pick them, you'll come November sixth. I'd like to be one of those people sitting at that council desk, and I think I can give you a great value and hard four years of work. Give me your trust. Thank you very much.
I'm going to read this because it has quotes. I'm passionate about the city of Solvang. It is important to me that the city thrives and continues to share the Danish culture with our visitors. Projects come and go in Solvang. No matter what, a council person needs to be dependable, ethical, willing to learn, and approachable throughout the project, the process of governance, governance of and by the people. These are some of the things I try to do in my daily life, and they're from Cowboy Ethics. Yes, I am a cowboy. As a person, I take pride in my work. I do what has to be done even though it may not be the popular decision. Hopefully, I talk less and say more. I finish when I start. I can be tough but fair and do what is best for Solvang. I know what it's I know where to draw the line and when to do it. When I make a promise, I keep to the best of my ability. And finally, I try to live each day with courage. This is my personal code. My code as a Solvay city council person and resident of Solvay since 1979. This is my code as a citizen of the state of California, a seventh-generation Californian. This is my code as a proud American.
Thanks very much. We left one person out in the thank yous. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce, thank you to WeWatch, and thank you to the star very much for putting this on. I'm going to continue to walk, I'm going to continue to talk with the residents, I'm going to continue to find what's important. I urge you, please, to go on my website, ClarkforSolvay.org. On my website, there's a section about me, who I am, blah, blah, blah. And my door in my office is always open. As I've been on the planning commission, I do still get an earful about beer on the road. It doesn't matter, you can come in and talk about anything, but most of you know where I work. My office is open up there 11 hours a day, so I'd love to have you stop by. Yeah, that's pretty much it. And I was really, really nervous tonight because I have a 17-year-old going to LAX to get my wife because it was important for me to get here tonight. So, they're almost home. So, that's why I'm watching my phone, if you don't mind, I'm sorry. But a 17-year-old going to LAX is pretty cool. I'm going to just go play, I think.
Thank you very much for coming here this evening to listen to all of us. I'd like to give you a quick synopsis of the personal side of Karen Way, other than the political face that people see in the community. Several reasons why I am qualified to maintain my two-year CEO on this council and I am very hard to keep it. First of all, I am a senior compliance analyst and a managing auditor in the financial industry and I carry nine FINRA financial licenses. I do have a BA from Scripture College in Claremont. I am an help. I'm involved in a lot of things in the community. I'm an help at the San Is 2640 Lodge. A member of the Las Alibas Rotary as well. I cover this whole valley. This is a valley initiative. Solvay obviously is my concentration, but we do live in a community and we all join together doing many things. I was an elected official and I was the board president for ID Number One. I was their first woman trustee and their first woman board president. I was also on the Board of Solvay Architectural Review as an appointed member. As I said before, I'm a 23-year-old resident businesswoman. Very quickly, I will tell you what I've accomplished in this past year being appointed council member. I have contributed to the innovation of arts and culture in this town. I've worked hard with tourism, transportation, council committees. I am the representative for the newly formed Central Coast Groundwater Management Agency, which is coming up, which will be very important. And I've worked very hard to create Measure F218 to implement local tax on all cannabis-related revenue, should that come to our city. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to thank everybody also for coming. And this is the largest crowd I've ever seen in any candid forum since 2002. It's also the largest turnout for candidates. And I want to thank that as an indication that for a number of years, we had a very small number of people running and we were being, basically running unopposed. People were thinking, feeling that we were doing a good job. Seeing this, number of people running for these positions, I have a feeling maybe there's people feeling that the city council is not doing quite as good a job as they have in the past. I know everybody's trying to do their best, but when you have this many people running for positions, there might be some concerns that the city is not running quite as well as it has in the past. I know everybody's done what they feel is the best. I have concerns that there were some things that have been done that have not been to the city's interests. Particularly with the cannabis, medical cannabis passage, which I don't feel is really one of the items, it's not one of the strong points that has happened in the last year for the city of Solvay. But I feel that I have done a number of items. I've been here for all my life, been involved in Danish days, the Rotary, Danish Brotherhood, number of different items, and I hope that you consider me for, to your position. Thank you very much.
All right. Ryan's stopped here again. And I promise I won't be at the cowbell. I'm so happy that for the first time in a while, we've had a very competitive election. You've got someone running for mayor, first time in, what, eight years, 10 years, six years? And I stirred the pot. Anyway, I'll make the rest of these questions that were asked tonight available on my website, ryanformayor.org, because I think that there were a lot of other very great questions asked here and unfortunately we can't address them all tonight. Anyway, vote for energy, vote for efficiency, and vote yourself. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Jim Richardson and I'm running for mayor again. I want you to know that I am currently the longest-serving mayor in the county of Los Angeles. I don't want to be a part of Los Angeles. If I'm re-elected, I'll be the longest-serving member of SB CAG and ABCU. I've been on the council for 13 years. I served one year as on the planning commission and I served almost a half a year on the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I came off Parks and Recreation because I was appointed to the city council in 2005. Now, I want to say thank you all for coming. I'd love to see these crowds, I'd love to see them in the council chambers. It shows a real interest in our city and what's going on. People come to the council chamber when their goals get going, you know? Come and visit and see how we run the organization. I want to comment on Chris, he's been there pretty regularly, and so has Denise. She's shown up. So, it's good to see you all. I also want to say to the reporters in the room, I have printed copies of the questions and the answers. I'd like to give those to you so you'll have those bigger job opportunities here. And then, over there, right over there, where you see my trademark election sign that I stand on the corners with, there's a booth there, there's Chalkus. I'd love you to come over and say hi and we can talk. So, he's got one. And you know, I've told several of you tonight that when you get in that voting booth, it's just you and the ballot. And remember, under the category of mayor, there's the top name, that's me. When you're here, you can mark that spot in and put me in office again. And listen, I might work with this guy on the council. I want to be with him. We do a good job on the finance committee and he does a good job on the ad hoc things that he's on. So, I'd like to see him and I both back there. So, vote for me and we'll work together in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. If you ask, I'd like to hang around and let you ask more questions, but we are officially done. Thanks again to the chamber.